We're gonna start off with prayer and pledge. Prayer will be led by Mayor Pro Tem Balls, and the pledge will be led... Is that the one you said you'd do?
Yes, I said I'd do the prayer.
You said you'd do the prayer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Councilwoman Bench will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you would like to give your heads? In the name of God, the most gracious, the most merciful, the one that guide us to do all the things that is right in your eyes. Please guide this city council and all the people that work in this city, and help out our managers to be good managers, and our employees to be good employees. And please, Lord, help our citizens to be good citizens here in the city of Saginaw. For, Lord, we know we need you right now. So please come and help us do what is right in your eyes. All as we say in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. This is a public meeting, and the audience is asked to refrain and remain quiet when someone is speaking. No booing, clapping, or unnecessary rude noise. Um, housekeeping. I need all cell phones put on vibrate, please. Audience, I need you to put yours on vibrate, too. I still need a phone. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia?
Present.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Balls?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Ostash?
Present.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Copeland?
Present.
And Mayor Moore?
Present.
You have nine members present and zero absent.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements, Madam Clerk?
We have a few. Tomorrow, Tuesday, July 26th, at 4:00 p.m. is the deadline to file as a city council candidate or a Saginaw School Board candidate. City council will have four term, four four-year terms, and the Saginaw School District Board will have two six-year terms on the November 8th ballot. Petitions and affidavit of identity forms are available at the city clerk's office. Next Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, is the primary election. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. If you need to vote absentee, absentee ballot applications are available in the clerk's office. And finally, the clerk's office will be open this Saturday, July 30th, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. for absentee ballot requests. And Mayor, that takes us to public hearings.
Thank you. The purpose of a public hearing is for the public to address the council as a whole and for council to hear the information provided by the speaker for consideration regarding a specific action being requested. Speakers must be, must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name, your position, if you support or if you are against the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter and will desire 10 minutes. And the other speaker that comes behind them will have three minutes. You will be timed by our city clerk. Madam Clerk.
The public hearing on the agenda is to request to amend the Brownfield Plan for the city of Saginaw to include the Second National Building Redevelopment Project located at 101 and 113 North Washington Avenue, 111 East Genesee Avenue, and 101 North Water Street.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. You saved me three calls.
I'm here, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Tom Miller with Saginaw Future. Good evening, council, interim city manager. This is, I think, the third meeting in a row that we've had something regarding the Huntington or Bank Building, formerly known as the Second National Bank Building. So I won't go over all of the details that I, that I've already gone over. This is the Brownfield, so you previously approved the Oprah, the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act exemption, which is a tax freeze for up to 12 years. Oprah's law, or Brownfields, excuse me, which is the matter you have before you today, is to allow the developer to capture eligible activities under the Brownfield law to reimburse expenses as a result of the project. Just to remind you, this is a transformational historic redevelopment and adaptive reuse, complete rehabilitation of two functionally obsolete former multi-use buildings in downtown Saginaw. The 12-story Tower Building was built in 1925. It's 131,000 square feet. The three-story Annex was built in 1977. It's 37,000 square feet. The developer, Landmark LLC, is a single-purpose entity controlled by the Michigan Community Capital Group and intends to acquire and redevelop this iconic, dilapidated, but architecturally significant landmark in downtown Saginaw. The bank lobby will be converted into event space, preserving the historic lobby. Huntington Bank will still maintain a presence in the building. There'll be 119 market-rate apartments, providing missing middle housing for the city of Saginaw. The project will also provide some amenities and a mixed income at a price point that is needed in the region. The, the Brownfield eligible activities include environmental due diligence, asbestos and lead abatement, interior and selective exterior demolition, site preparation, and infrastructure elements. The capture is slated to begin in 2023 and continue through 2051. That's 29 years. That's allowable under the Brownfield Act. 25 years of reimbursement to the developer and five years of deposits into the local Brownfield revolving loan fund, something that Lori Brown and Yolanda and I worked to set up so that we could use those funds in, in the future to support, to support future developments. Capital investment is currently at $48.2 million. The eligible activities to be reimbursed are $6.6 million roughly. And as a result, the, the Brownfield revolving loan fund will capture, when it's all finalized, $1.7 million that we'll be able, again, use for future activities. This will create full-time jobs and retain 20. It'll also bring income tax to the city of Saginaw with the residential units that have been added. And I'll be here to answer questions when it comes time for the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this subject? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this subject? By no time. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are now at public input.
We welcome those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clear so we don't miss what you're trying to say. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. Speakers have three minutes as the limit time, which they, which will be timed by the clerk. So make sure you make your points clear to us within those three minutes. Remember, we are, we want to remain spec, we want, we want to remain courteous and respectful at all times because they'll, we have people who are watching on SGTV and also people in the council chambers. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Athena Jimenez. Don't see her. Alberto Tenneyuki? Next is Ralph Martin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Madam Mayor, Council, city of Saginaw. My name is Ralph Martin. And this is Alexis Thomas. We're representing the Saginaw African Cultural Festival. And we are glad to see you this, this evening. And we are definitely here just to make sure that we welcome you and give you an initial, an official invitation to the Saginaw African Cultural Festival this year. We will be meeting at the, at the Morley Grounds the second weekend of August, August 12th, 13th, and 14th. We would love to see your happy faces on the grounds, enjoying our culture, our food, and our, and our entertainment, and all the things we have going on. This year's principles, or our theme this year, I'm sorry, is the principle of Anea. The principle of Anea is from Kwanzaa and is to commit ourselves to the glorious duty of restoring our families, our neighborhoods, and our people to our historical greatness. So in doing so, we think we're gonna put something together this year after the 54 years of, of continuous African Cultural Festival here in the city of Saginaw. We're gonna put on the best one we've ever had this year. We would love to have you as part of our, of our attendees. We really support, we really appreciate your support. Many of you have supported us for so many years, many ways, as far as with your kindness, your support, even economically. I want you to keep on doing that. Bring all your friends and family. We have so much going on. And our vice president, Alexis, will tell you some things that we got going on. Alexis?
Alexis didn't sign up. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. We have One Way coming. As far as we have, our, one of our main, our main entertainers, this One Way, featuring Al Hudson. He's a national recording artist. We have the Charles McNair Hometown Showcase going on. We try, we have a chess master gonna be on, on the grounds playing multiple games of chess and showing and teachings. We have a 5K that we would like to invite everyone that wanna be involved in our 5K. It's gonna be right on the River Walk right here on this, on the Saturday morning. We would like to send you the link so you can sign up for our 5K. It's gonna help benefit youth mental health. One of, one of our special, we wanna make sure that we wanna have support for youth mental health. It's gonna be, and we have Alexis, I mean, not Alexis, but Angelia Williams, our aunt from Great Lakes Bay. It's gonna be our Masters of Ceremony on that one. We got poetry, comedy, health and self, health and self-defense exhibitions, African drummers. Our STEM program will be involved with the Saginaw African Cultural Festival this year. Delta College, Saginaw Valley State University is involved. This year, we're gonna actually feature an African village, where you can experience an African village, and pickleball, three-on-three.
Motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. And I, we appreciate that.
Hold on. Hold on one minute.
Okay.
Then all, that's, okay.
Take your vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, let me just say this. When you wanna make a motion, you gotta speak clearly or you gotta be recognized. Please. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Also, Mayor, may I make a motion?
A motion for what, sir?
Could I motion to suspend the rule so the madam may speak?
You can't do that.
Okay.
I can't?
No.
No, you have to sign up to speak. If you don't sign up to speak, when you come up to speak, when I start reading the thing, if you sign up before 1:00 on that day, then you're allowed to speak. If you don't, we don't bend the rules. We're so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay? We don't wanna start changing rules in the middle of the junction.
Appreciate it, but we're good.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, are you ready?
I am.
Mr. Martin, you can continue.
Well, thank you very much, and I really appreciate that. We're just trying to rush. I was kinda blowing through it because this is a special event. And I, I like being able to kinda relax and come down. I was in another meeting, but now I'm, now I'm 100% in this meeting. So it's, it's, it's so dear and, and a passion. We have a committee of about 15 individuals that, that are so committed to our, to our community to help bring one of the best events that Saginaw has had, you know, year after year after year. I was just speaking with the chief how that, our event is usually, you know, eventful, free. It's very friendly for senior citizens, to children. They come out, have a good time. You see the smiles on the kids' faces. We have so much activity for the kids this year. Horseback riding, the fire safety house will be involved. STEM program is gonna be involved. Delta College are gonna bring a planetarium. We have a lot of things that the kids are gonna have a really good time to see what's going on and experience something differently that they may not experience all the time. Very good music coming. Got music, entertainers coming from Ann Arbor, Detroit, and like I say, One Way, featuring Al Hudson and our own hometown person, Jeanette Mack sings with that group. And what they met, Charles McNair always pressed that we try to bring hometown individuals and put them on the stage. And that's what we're gonna do. So please, please, thank you for all, all you've done and come to our festival, second weekend of August.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dante Davis.
Hi, how everybody doing? Mayor, Pro Tem, city of Saginaw. Really appreciate you guys for having us. Just wanted to come in and introduce ourselves and introduce myself. I'm the founder and CEO of Saginaw STEM. Some of you have heard of us, some of you have not. We're, we started a program here to help our youth here in Saginaw get into careers in science, technology, engineering, and math. Our kids here are part of STEM whether they wanna be or not. So what we wanna do is help them not just focus on playing the video game, but we wanna show them how to program and develop the video games and get paid for it. So I did sign up. Miles and Gabby to talk if they wanna say something. I told them they don't have to. You wanna say something? You don't have to.
One at a time.
Okay, so.
You, you wrap up your.
Okay, perfectly fine. Thank you so much. So yeah, I actually live in Los Angeles. I travel back every week or every two weeks to, to put on these events that we put on here. We got an event called STEM Saturdays, where we host these events monthly at SASSA. And it's open and free for all K through 12 students from anywhere. So we've, we've averaged from last, last August, we had our first event through June of this year, and we were averaged over 100 kids per, per event. So we do a different theme every single month. We've done heart in the circulatory systems, lung in the respiratory system, both partnered with Extension St. Mary's Hospital. We've done Electrical Circuit Day with Consumers Energy and MDOT. We've, we've done eight events over the past, past year or so. And that's where we're averaging those 100 students. The students that you see behind me are from an after-school program between Saginaw High and Arthur Hill High School kids called the First Things First After-School Enrichment Program. And where we're, the first phase, we were building a go-kart, or we did build a go-kart, from a kit. And now we're converting that go-kart from a gas engine to an electric go-kart. And then we'll be moving on to the next phase, which is a solar car team that we're gonna travel to Texas Motor Speedway and compete in that national solar car competition. So then I'll let Gabby speak.
Oh, they have to, they have to be signed up, so the other two.
Oh, they are.
Gabby and Miles, all right.
Okay. Are you setting the time?
Yeah. Yep, are you finished with your time, then?
Yep, I just wanted to introduce myself and make sure you know who I am. The program is about the kids, and I wanna make sure it stays about the kids.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next speaker, then, that we have signed up is Naveya.
Okay.
Naveya says she don't wanna talk.
She's our most talking of all, too.
Come on, Naveya, come on.
It's okay.
That's all right.
Thank you.
How about Gabriella?
All right. Hi.
Hello.
I'm one of the students from Arthur Hill. We have some others from Saginaw High. From Saginaw High, we have Miles here tonight. And also from Arthur Hill, we have Naveya, who's shy. And not only relearning for, just also STEM skills by, also you have the STEM Saturdays, which are held once a month, but also then you have the after-school program, which is really cool because, I mean, I don't really know much about automotive, but I'm learning from one of my peers, Jalen, who goes to Saginaw High, who, he's really good at automotive. And he's teaching me things that I never would've thought about automotive. And I'm taking welding and SEC, and I'm now seeing how close those two fields are related. And I'm seeing that connection. I'm loving seeing that connection. And I wanna help, I mean, I'm wanting to volunteer the STEM Saturdays this year when I start back up. And I wanna help other kids, whether they're younger or same age as me, find that connection in STEM because it's a part of our lives whether or not we realize it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is actually Audrey Beatty.
Okay, that's not the best, but since Naveya didn't wanna speak, I did wanna make sure that I recognize Pro Tem Balls has been at, at every one of our STEM Saturday events and support us for everything, at everything we do. The mayor came to run against as well. We've just been receiving so much support. And we just, thank you guys for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, young people.
Thank you.
Do we have Ms. Audrey Beatty?
Yep, she's here.
She's here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, all the council people.
Put the mic down.
We need you to pull the mic down so we can hear you. Thank you.
I will begin this evening by expressing my gratitude and my delight at seeing a, a, a community gathering over the weekend on the south end, south side of Saginaw. And Mr. Fred, Fred Stewart, he was responsible for this. He was just a neighbor, and he, he said he's been there all his life, and they do that every year, sometime more than once or twice a year. But it was a really nice event. He had the, one of the, someone made the stage for him, and they had the bouncy houses and everything. It was really a nice event. I thought it was so well. And he had done all the cooking and everything. I just said it was so well, that we should have more of that. Okay, now, one other thing is that we have a lot of seniors, centarians and 90-year-old people in our community. And that's one of the things when I'm asking for consideration for a, what I would call a senior citizens enrichment coalition, where we can bring our issues, concerns, and so forth, where they relate to seniors. Because not all seniors know how to come to City Hall and request what they need. So I'm saying you should, I think you should take some of those funds and have a, create a special allotment for people that have, let's say they need work done in their homes, but they gotta have roof. Now, this is not the first time I've expressed this to city council. But I think there should be a special allotment or some special fund when they're eligible. They should be able to get, you should have a blanket policy that will cover the ones that are eligible, seniors and so forth, if they're eligible, so they can have the work done properly. Because when they can't afford a roof, they're subject to the shade tree people, you know, doing the work, and it doesn't end right. It just ends up in a bad way. Okay, that's another concern. But I know, I, I, in the interest of time, I didn't know that today was a deadline for something. So I'm just gonna talk until you tell me to shut up. But, okay, one, another thing that I'm concerned about is the, the fact that when seniors need work done there in their homes, your multipurpose or your city grants and things like that, they can only be eligible for help once every 20 years by the city. That is ridiculous. I think y'all should work to modify that, your policy or whatever it is that relates to that. Because that's why so many people don't have... I'm through already.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the speaker's time for a minute.
Thank you.
How much time?
One minute and a half.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Okay.
Just one minute. Just one minute, Clerk.
All right, okay, well, I guess, okay, all right. What I was gonna say.
Are you ready, Ms. Chris?
Pardon me?
We needed to get it clear from the clerk, Ms. Beatty, that she was ready to start the timing.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, so as I said, once every 20 years, you guys must do something to make it fair. And we need a think tank, a community think tank. And that will allow a lot of the seniors that don't know how to present or propose to the city to get things done. We need a think tank. Okay, so much for the think tank. But we also need a think tank to cover the, the youth needs and so forth. Form is dictated, form dictates function. You know what that means? Look at Midland and then compare it with us. If they have so much of what they need, it would be useful and would be enjoyable for the kids. And another thing, if kids are gonna grow up in a community where they're not growing up together, how do you expect them to come together as they get older? Because we're not gonna live in the same communities, not all the time, but I think that's very critical. Okay, another thing, I mentioned the centarians. Okay, I'm gonna just say, there are churches in our area. They don't know how to have their members come before you and request. So I suggested that they have a coalition as well, as the seniors. There is a real need for so many things around here, and I think y'all just, okay, I'm gonna be quiet now, but I guess I have to come back another time. But you know me, I got plenty of ideas, and I just wanna know who to take them to because I have, I, I just have a real concern for this city, you know.
All right, Ms. Beatty.
Okay.
We are taking everything into consideration that you're saying, ma'am. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is remarks of council.
Councilmembers, remember, you have three minutes to, to report out. We will begin tonight with Councilman Ostash.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody, to the council chambers. I'm glad to be back. I was not at the last meeting. I, my vacation had fallen at that time. I wanna thank all of our speakers that came out tonight as well. Mr. Martin, looking forward to the event. I don't know if they're still here. But the African-American Culture Festival is an excellent event and looking forward to it again now after the COVID is over. Also, too, Dante Davis, I believe, they're not here either. But it, STEM is a great program. I'm in the sciences myself, in computers. I'm in the sciences myself and computers, so I applaud this group for what they're doing with our youth, and you could just hear the excitement from the one student that was there, so thank you for everything that you are doing with STEM in our city. Also, I just want to give a plug for the first annual Peace in the Community Kickball event. I told Mr. Lawrence I'm gonna be out of town and can't event, can't, can't attend, but I would definitely be giving it a plug. Saturday, August 20th, this is gonna be noon to six at Hoyt Park, and there's information online if you have access to that. It's being sponsored by Garber Chevrolet, P O B O, B F B, and the TNT Authentic Mexican. There is also an announcement I have here. There's a fiscal, a financial fitness event that's gonna be held on Thursday, August 25th. This is a free event. It's gonna be at 6:00 PM. Snacks and drinks will be provided. It's gonna be at CMRC in Bay City, however, but this event is being thrown by Great Lakes Bay Pride. I also wanna take some time at this moment to recognize and my condolences to Tom Mudd. Tom Mudd lost his wife when I was out of town, out of state over the last couple of weeks, and I did not know this. Evelyn, I had the honor of serving with Evelyn on the Historic District Commission, as well as her husband, Tom, who's the local historian in the city. Tom is also responsible for the Neon Park in Old Town and many other activities. But Evelyn, his wife, is gonna be definitely missed. She was very active in the community, so I just wanna say condolences to Tom and his family. This Wednesday night, again, there's gonna be Light Up the City, Wednesday, July 27th. They're gonna be starting at Jerome Elementary School, and that will take place at 5:30 PM until 7:30 PM. And I'm going too quick, 'cause I also picked up a little bit of a cold while I was in vacation, and I'm recovering from that and my voice is kinda hoarse, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor, of Saginaw. Thank you so much to Panda House. They gave me, every time I come, I walk here, and they give me a huge tea and like a soup thing, and it's a thank you for them. Also, to State Rep. O'Neill, thank you so much for coming here. When I was running, I used to watch old videos of you back in 2016 to 17. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here. I appreciate everything you do for the community, and I hope to see you next year. On August 4th, there are two things going on, and there, you could be able to make the time for both. So the new 7-Eleven is opening up on August 4th from 11:00 AM until 1:00 PM. They're gonna have a ribbon-cutting ceremony, slurpees, DJ, prizes, sampling and drawings. I'm not sure why I continue to have a 7-Eleven theme, but last time we had a, a meeting, it was 7-Eleven, so it's gonna be great. And then after that, Tamara Tucker is gonna put on another event for parents of murdered children. It's gonna be over at the Anderson Enrichment Center from 5:00 until 8:00, and this is a fundraiser to continue to have her, help her efforts for what she's doing for the community. So it's being put on by a couple different businesses throughout the township, so please come if you can. Again, it's gonna be a good time. It's a safe summer mixer and ice cream social. The Saginaw Soup Kitchen is putting on a contest. I think it's $2,000 for folks that are able to make a entrepreneurial, I always have a hard time with this word, entrepreneurship pitch, and it's gonna be happening on, I think the 11th, but if you have any questions about it, please contact Cassie Zimmerman at 989-717-4045. And then last, I had been speaking with a counterpart over with the Detroit City Council. They had just gone on a retreat together. I don't think that's something that we've done since I've been on here. We've had different, you know, lobbying dinners and different events, but when I talked with my counterpart, she said that, you know, one of the most important things that you could do is get a little bit closer to the people that you work with. And, you know, it's no secret that Saginaw has issues with, you know, folks on here. There's been media reports, you know, I'm personally blocked from two different Facebooks, but I would encourage all of us to start thinking about moving forward with the ARPA funds, with the new election, that we start getting together. It's gonna be free and kind of figuring out how we wanna move the city forward.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
All right, good night, uh, not good night, good evening, everyone. Tells you where my mind is right now. I do wanna share. It's good seeing everyone. Thank you to our speakers this evening. Ms. Beatty, so good seeing you. I miss seeing you these past couple of meetings. Glad to hear from you. I'm excited about Mr. Martin and our African Cultural Festival. I'm, think I'm, I'm trying to get a team together for the 5K. I'm not gonna do that by myself, so I'm trying to get a team together right for that one. As a reminder, Saginaw Soup Deadline is July 31st. It's an opportunity for the entrepreneurs of our community to have a pitch and sponsor through the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, and it's a great opportunity. I haven't been able to get, get to them, but the pitchers are always telling like there's a party going on. So I encourage our local businesses to encourage step out on Wednesdays. You can find them at the SVRC Downtown Saginaw. Also, had a great time out with my fellow council members at Friday Night Live, getting a chance to meet and talk to some of our constituents and talk about the master plan. And again, for the master plan, it is available to be reviewed. There will be a open meeting at the Planning Commission meeting on August 23rd, so I encourage all our residents, take a moment to look at the master plan. If you have some comments, please stop by the, the Planning Commission on August 23rd. Also, I want to, I reached out to him today, and I have to congratulate Battalion Chief Jim Foreman on his retirement. He'll be retiring next month, and I remember during my campaign, having the chance to sit down and hear his heart about the city of Saginaw and the work that he's done, so I, although he's not here, and I don't know if Chief is here, but I just wanted to say congratulations on the retirement and thank you for your service. Also, August 2nd, please remember to vote. At this point, there's a lot to risk, so please get out and vote on August 2nd. August 6th, there's the Movies Under the Stars at Jolt Credit Union. They'll be playing Encanto. I had a chance to go with my family. They were playing Space Jam 2. It's free food, you can RSVP. It's a great time for your families. It's in a safe space, so it's something to do. Get your family out, spend some time with them. And then August 8th is the Downtown Saginaw Farmers Market at night. Please, if you can, support our local farmers downtown. We've developed and we still need to make sure that we're supporting our local small businesses in our area. And that's all I have. Everyone have a great week, stay safe, please drink your water and stay hydrated.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone here. So glad you decided to come to City Council, see what's going on, see what we doing, see what we not doing. Like to say thank you to all of our public speakers. I, actually, the other council persons, some of them said some of the things I was gonna say, so no need to repeat, but I definitely wanna give you a phone number in regards to the first annual Peace in the Community Kickball, and I'd like to let my fellow council members know that we've been called out, so I can't help you, but I will cheer you on, and also elected officials have been called out, so y'all make it do what it do if you can. But anyway, if you have, I want any information, you can call Chuckie Lawrence at 989-598-2786. Also, I'd like to let everyone know, and also my council persons, we finally, 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 finally have a date, a time and a place for Let the Youth Speak in conjunction with the Saginaw Public Safety. It is going to be the 18th of August at Bliss Park at 5:00 PM. All the youth, you know, I call youth, consider my age, youth, 40, 40 and under, but anybody that wants to have something to say, but we mainly wanna hear from our youth in the city. It's, where we not dictating to them, we wanna hear what they have to say. Where do they see the city going? Where have we gone wrong? If you wanna call me out, call me out. You know, tell me, you know, Monique, I think you could do this. I think City Council could do this. Law enforcement can do that. This is a day when you want to come to the mic and be heard, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. A lot of people have already have come and said they were ready and they're interested, so please let all the youth in the city know. We're gonna have information for them, we're gonna have giveaways, it's gonna be awesome. So please spread the word, and I will give you more information as it comes all together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Is Ralph Martin still here?
He's gone.
He's gone. Okay, Brother Martin stood up here and talked for four and a half minutes and didn't mention anything about the food that's gonna be at the African Cultural Festival. So if you don't come out for anything else, come out for that food, 'cause that's what I'm going for. Our presenters for the STEM program, that was a great presentation. I was very excited to hear the things that are being done, 100 children learning about science and technology. I wanna say this, as a parent, I was very fortunate when I worked for the Saginaw City Police Department to be a, involved with the Family Youth Initiative. So my sons, my two sons were exposed to these types of things every year, probably for about maybe 10 years. And as parents, sometimes we can get very comfortable in leaving our children to find things to do for themselves versus being involved in doing things, listening or watching City Council and hearing about these types of things, picking up the local papers to see what's going on in our city. There, there should be no excuse for a child not to have something to do, because there's something always going on in Saginaw, regardless of our crime or the perceptions or anything. There is something always going on. There are people that are always looking out for our youth. And I know that our Mayor Pro Tem always talks about mentorship, and we do need more mentors, but it is mentoring going on. But as parents, we just need to pay attention. We need to look out for our own children as well and get them involved in these things that are going on, because hearing that young lady speak about the welding and automotive coming, it's like, that was, that's beautiful. That, that's really beautiful. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Councilwoman Bitch.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Yes, I'll just continue on from where Councilman Williams left off, but I am, I too am very excited about the opportunity that Saginaw STEM is providing to our students. The young lady was talking about the, the connection, like my colleague referred to, between welding and being a mechanic and, and things like that. That's just right up my son's alley. He's 16 years old, and it's just really, really a very good time for them to be that age. And in school, there are so many opportunities for you to guide them, and as, as he was saying, that, you know, we need to look out for our own kids, but I, I find myself telling my kids, you can be anything you wanna be, you can anything, you can, you know, but that's not enough, telling them that they can do anything they choose to do. You have to like actually help them hone in and cultivate those skills, because you'll grow up to be, you know, an adult still figuring out what you wanna be when you grow up. And, and so I just very excited about these opportunities. I've been reading a lot about it on Riverfront Saginaw. I think that was one of the first places I, I got more in-depth information, but it's really exciting. And two, the African Cultural Festival is definitely one of our favorite activities for the summer. It's a just a wonderful, wonderful event, and I cannot say enough about the, the good food and the, the vendors. I always go and I, I set aside a certain amount for money or for food, and I always end up buying clothing and sunglasses and all sorts of other fancy things, purses and wallets and just incredibly cool stuff, and it all goes to a wonderful event, so I just wanted to, yeah, say that. And as my other colleague mentioned, we do have a primary coming up on the second, and I got my usually expected call that when I'm not on the ballot, Janet knows this, and she knows that that means I'm free to work the election. And so I will be working the, one of the precincts, but I would just encourage anybody listening, if it's not too late for the August 2nd primary, contact our Clerk's Office. We are always looking for people who can help, especially people who can do it consistently, you know, and, and get the hang of it, 'cause you do it, you get trained, the training's excellent, it's fresh in your mind, but it, it helps to do it a couple of election cycles and really get the hang of it and kind of become friends with the people at your precinct. And it's just, it's, it's a really nice activity and a really nice way to participate and give back. And I would add too, with absentee ballots, they are still available, but we're getting so close to the deadline that you should use one of our four drop boxes that are located throughout the city, put it in the drop box directly behind City Hall or physically walk in. I know either later on, well, tomorrow probably, I'll be back in to just request my ballot and vote right there in City Hall, but just don't, don't take the chance that with the mail delays, make sure that you get your ballot if you're voting absentee and get it physically to where it needs to go. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem boss. Oh, I'm sorry. Autumn, I'm so sorry. Next, we have Councilwoman Shersha. I come down the road and I just wanna keep going.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do wanna just say thank you to all of our public speakers. I truly enjoy when I see lots of names on the public input list, because we do truly care to hear about your complaints, your concerns, the positive things, it doesn't matter, because that is what we are sitting here for. I think the African Cultural Festival is one of the premier festivals or events that we have here in the city of Saginaw, and I always love representing the finest sorority in the D9 during that festival and performing. Many years we've done it, but it's for the culture, so I've been a supporter for a very, very long time, and definitely 54 years is a staple, so looking forward to continuing supporting in many, many ways for the festival. So thank you to Ralph and To Lexis for showing up. To Dante Davis and the students in STEM Saginaw, it is a beautiful thing when you can show a pathway to somebody, whether you're 12 or you're 52. And STEM is a hot, in-demand, high-demand field that we don't have enough individuals trained and certified in to fill those positions. And if you don't know somebody that works with workforce development or workforce training, you should get to know somebody on council that works very, very closely with it, because it can be robotics, it can be welding, it can be HVAC, it can be HVAC transport, it could be CDL. Almost everything has a STEM component to it now, because we're in evolving technology-enhanced time, so shout out to everyone that is working with the STEM Saginaw, because like fellow council members have says, you don't just need to tell somebody, you gotta show them. And when you show them, it changes your life and your perspective, so appreciate everything that is going on with that. I'm finally gonna be able to participate in the Friday Night Live. I've been out of town for work. It's been crazy, and it's one of my favorite ones, Fiesta Grande, so I will be there dancing with the mayor, and I hope everybody, she dances, don't let her fool you. Hopefully, everyone can come out. I look forward to participating and spending some time with you. Everything else I wanted to cover, everyone did. It's kind of the hard part of going last, so that's all I have.
Thank you so much, and I do apologize. I do.
Did you lie that you don't dance? No, just kidding.
No, I apologize for sleeping over you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem boss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too like to personally thank all the presenters that came out today, and I wanna personally and publicly thank Representative O'Neill for giving Saginaw STEM some of our tax dollars back to the city of Saginaw, the tune of $1 million, to help our children learn more about science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. I wanna thank you, thank you, thank you, 'cause that's a beautiful thing, because as a mentor myself, when you got other guys that's mentoring these kids and you got the money to do it too, it sprays like fire. Do you see how the young lady was taught from when she said that she learned something, that she learned how to weld, and then by her working with this guy, working with cars, and then she gonna work with somebody else? I mean, it just keep giving and giving and giving, and the more we give to our community like that, we make it prosper, and we have something for our kids to do. It's a lot easier for them to pick up a hammer or a screwdriver or two than, than picking up a gun, you know? We know that they doing that, so we got to engage these kids and make them do things or help them do things that's gonna help their interests out and make them be productive members in our society. And then too, I'd like to like to thank all the unions, Justin Palmerville, I know he was a big part of the Bridge the Gap program, another program that is really exciting for our city. I mean, here it is, we got a group of people that get together to raise money, to put people in the police academy in the Saginaw Great Lakes Bay region. I mean, Midland, Bay City, and Saginaw, these guys have given children, I mean, young people the opportunity to go to the police academy, paid all their funds, paid for all of it. And I think they even give them a stipend, so they don't have to worry about, you know, taking care of meals and stuff like that, but all these unions and the credit unions that get involved in helping them, I commend you and thank you so much for doing that for our community. You know, when we get together and do things as a whole, it helps out everybody. I mean, just seeing that young lady, her face lit up when she was talking about the guy talking about building a car, man, that's a beautiful thing. My great-grand, yeah, my great-grandkids, I had the opportunity to take them to one of the STEM events, and it was the one where they did the, where they operated on the heart and stuff like that. Can you imagine seeing 100 kids with lab coats on? I mean, it was magnificent. I mean, they thought they was really doing something. They had their jackets on, their, their safety glasses, and they were dissecting these pig hearts or whatever, and then somehow, and then they had the opportunity to make lungs out of balloons and stuff and straws to see how it actually worked. So whenever we can plant that in them, it's gonna, it's gonna multiply, it's gonna multiply, it's gonna give them something to do to make them better people in our society, and I thank you all for doing that. Madam Mayor, that's all I got to say, but I was, one more thing I was thinking. Bridge the Gap is even gonna have a Feed the City in Saginaw, Bay City, and Midland, and I hope that we start doing something where we start getting all these employees together, so we can get people to hire our kids too in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
You're welcome. Last but not least, me. Everything has already been said, but I do wanna say this. It's a new season, it's a new day. Fresh anointing is coming our way. The spirit of power and prosperity, it's a new season. The atmosphere is shifting in this city.
That's right.
If you don't feel it, I do. I hear us all say the same thing over and over again. All of these activities that we wanna go to, I'm gonna say this, and I'm done. Don't talk about going, go to them. Go to them. Let the community see you. How can you expect for somebody to ask you any questions when we not being seen? Okay? Okay? If we not being seen, then we don't get any reaction from anybody. If we're not being seen, then we don't get any reaction from anybody. I'm a firm believer, and I said it once and I'm going to continue to say it, I'm taking my city back.
That's right.
And the only way I can take it back is with y'all's help. Now, we want to do some things, but we need for you to help us. We can't do it by ourselves. We've tried that. We've tried that. And every time we try, we come short to the expectations. So now, Ms. Beatty, thank you so much. The stuff you have said has been duly noted, but I can tell you this, it takes money. It takes money to do these things. I would love to get together. I don't have a problem with helping anybody start any support group, anything that you need to start. However, if we don't have funds, how we going to do it? I got people calling me every day, can you cut my trees? Lord knows, if I was bewitched, I would wiggle my nose, and I would cut the trees, cut the grass, I would do all of that. But that's not being realistic. So Saginaw, I'm going to tell you, we're nothing without you guys. We need you to tell us what you want. If you don't tell us, how can we do? My fellow council persons, on Friday night, we will be, those that can attend, we will be at Friday Night Live. We try to go every week. I didn't go last week, because somebody ran on my key pod. So my car went to the shop. However, I will be there this week, and yes, me and Autumn will be dancing. Okay? So if nothing else, come watch me bust moves. Okay? As for the activities going on in the city, there's a lot going on in Saginaw. People can stop saying, Madam Clerk, I'm obedient.
Our next item is reports from the manager.
Our interim manager.
Good evening. I don't have anything new to report tonight, so I'll conclude with that.
You know, it always amazes me. Somebody got to sit in for somebody, because they get real quiet. Any other time, I can't, I cannot not hear him. I didn't hear nothing he said. He said he didn't have any reports for this evening. Our city manager is relaxing, I hope. And our interim is Dennis Jordan. And you know, we was going to be kind to you, Mr. Jordan. We weren't going to get shit.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
We are now to the consent agenda.
The agenda has been, excuse me.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we're not taking any questions then.
No, he had no reports, so what are we questioning?
Can I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have any updates from the ARPA Committee currently?
What's that?
Do we have any updates from the ARPA Committee currently?
Yeah, they're meeting tomorrow at the Anderson enrichment center. So, and there is an agenda out there. I don't know if you get a copy of that agenda items, if the council gets that, but they have an agenda out there, and they have a meeting tomorrow. They'll go to the public, so you're welcome to attend.
Do you know what time?
5:00, 5 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
They've been meeting for the last couple of Wednesdays, Mr. Flores, and they will continue to meet. The total report will come in front of us. They're projecting to end the last meeting in August, and they will start the presentations to us then. So they've been meeting every Wednesday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had motioned originally back in, I think, late April or early May, to get microphones so they'd be able to facilitate those meetings online. And then they said by June that would be done. So that's why I'm asking for an update. But now it's August, so I understand that date. So thank you for that update.
Now, let me say this. They're supposed to have it done. I know what you're talking about, Mr. Flores, but we don't have Mr. Morales here, so Vicky, if somebody can take note, and we can ask him when he comes back, but Mr. Jordan wouldn't have anything to do with that, because he's the personnel director. That would be a responsibility for our city manager. And he should be back, and he should be back after vacation, and at that time, we'll try to get you some answers, Mr. Flores.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, we are at the consent agenda. The agenda has been available in City Hall and on the city webpage and on SGTV, Channel 191. I need a motion to approve the agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved as second. Do we have any exceptions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is board commission and committee reports.
Do we have anyone who would like to? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify, I know some of my fellow council members reported. It is the Saginaw Soup Pitch Competition that is sponsored by Saginaw Futures, Saginaw Economic Development Corporation, the Small Business Development Center, Saginaw Chamber of Commerce, CMU RC, the city of Saginaw, Bridgeport, and the Saginaw Downtown Development Authority. It is sponsored by Huntington Bank Wildfire Credit Union, Copacou Credit Union, and Bridgeport DDA. So just wanted to clarify, there was some missing pieces, but the deadline, as shared, is July 31st. If you are interested, please contact Cassie Miller, as indicated, and she can be reached at 989-717-4045.
Now, she said it so fast, I need her to say the number again. Thank you. Is there any more reports?
Yes, ma'am. I'm on the airport board, and we had a meeting last week, and we discussed that the airport is trying to get another carrier out there. So they're trying their best to get more planes coming in, so we can have more routes going back out. And they are having, where the old airport was, they're clearing the grounds out to have a concert out there. So that might be a venue for maybe other things. But when they told me, it kind of scared the hell out of me. I was in Las Vegas when that guy shot the place up, and the people was, and it was right near the airport too. And it kind of scared me, because I had nightmares about that, you know, waking up in the middle of the night, knowing the people was running up and down the street. And the next day, Las Vegas Boulevard was like the Twilight Zone. No cars was moving. I mean, it was, police was all the way down the street, you know, every 10 feet, you saw two policemen, and it was a terrible event. So hopefully, we don't want to have anything that happened like that in the city of Saginaw. So I'm looking forward to them having that concert out there. But the airport board is looking forward to bringing, like I said, a new carrier. So, so I'll keep our fingers crossed on that one. Thank you.
Do we have any other reports?
Madam Mayor, this Wednesday at 4:00 PM, the Saginaw Housing Commission will be meeting at the Housing Commission office. There are some new updates going on with HUD, so I do encourage those who are interested or have questions to please attend at 4:00 PM. There's an open meeting, just to hear about some of the updates that's going on that relates to HUD and the city of Saginaw.
I need to report. Ms. Beatty, on Thursday, Region 7, down in Bay City, which is over all of the senior citizen program, we'll be having our committee at a home meeting. Some of the stuff that you brought up, I will make sure that I bring it up, to see if we can get some dollars and some senses into Saginaw. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Thank you. Could I ask the city attorney what the update on Elliott Larson is currently?
We are still waiting for the Michigan Supreme Court to rule in the Rouch case. They have to do so, I believe, before the end of the month. So we're just waiting for that opinion to drop to know where things stand.
So by maybe mid-August, we'd get a?
I think they have to have the opinion out by the end of July. I think that's the end of their session.
Okay. All right, thank you for that.
Any others? Madam Clerk.
Our next item is resolutions. We have two on the agenda. The first being to permit the liquor license classification transfer at 110 North Washington Avenue.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved as support. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Madam Clerk.
The second is to amend the Brownfield Plan for the city of Saginaw to include the Second National Building Redevelopment Project located at 101 and 113 North Washington Avenue, 111 East Genesee Avenue, and 101 North Water Street.
I'm sorry. I need a motion to approve, to adopt, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Madam Clerk.
Our next item is miscellaneous business.
Do we have anything that needs to come before the council body? Me and Councilman Austin, we did attend the Hoop. Didn't I say it right? Coop.
Coop.
The Coop Ribbon Cutting Seminary this afternoon, and it is truly going to be a diamond in the rough of Saginaw. It is something not different. It's almost connected and related to the STEM program to me. Again, the STEM program, we need to get more. So that was a good event that we went to today. Anyone else? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved as supported.